Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the planning board meeting of February 28th, 2023. If we would all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. Thank you very much. Our first order of business is to welcome back Ms. Sordillo from her extended absence. All right. 7:03 PM. Our second order of business is a public hearing continued on the application of Slocum Gibbs Cranberry Company requesting a definitive subdivision approval pursuant to the Carver subdivision control bylaw for property located off Wareham Street on assessors' maps, 127 lot 33, 128 lots 1, 2, 3, 6-1, and 15 in Carver, Mass. In a residential agricultural district. Proposed work includes construction of a plus or minus 400 linear foot roadway and cul-de-sac, stormwater management system, and upgrading to support a three lot conventional subdivision. Each proposed single-family dwelling lot will have its own private well and septic system. It is my understanding that Mr. Dambrosio, in behalf of Slocum Gibbs, requested a continuance.
Correct. So the issue is because of voting requirements and absences and the fact that we don't have the Mullen Rule, it's kind of tough to move forward if somebody's missing. So in this case, Kevin is on a well-deserved trip to see his family. And so doing the math, and unfortunately, I was doing the math late today. And this one and the next one are both in that same category where the offset of who's here, who's not been here, how many hearings we've had before, and who can vote in the absence of the Mullen Rule. I typically tend to advise applicants, it's up to them. But oftentimes, they'll ask for a continuance, as was the case with this in the next item as well.
All right. The proponent has requested a continuance to March 28th, 2023 at 7:00 PM. We don't have any issues with that at this time.
No.
So seeing no concerns raised, the chair will accept the motion to continue the application of Slocum Gibbs Cranberry Company requesting a definitive subdivision until March 28th, 2023 at 7:00 PM.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Gatski, seconded by Ms. Sordillo.
John wants to step down.
Opening up for discussion. Seeing no discussion. It is a public hearing, and we will... Mr. Deon.
Mr. Deon says aye.
Mr. Gatski.
John Gatski says aye.
Ms. Sordillo.
Ellen Sordillo says aye.
Mr. Williams. Mr. Williams is not part of this one?
It's a subdivision, not a special permit.
All right. So four and oh. Mr. Shea votes aye. Our next order of business is on the application of Weathervein at Patriots Pines requesting a special permit and site plan review to section 2230, 3100, 3900, 4300, and 5300 of the Carver zoning bylaws and a definitive subdivision plan pursuant to the Carver subdivision control bylaw for property located at zero South Meadow Road in Carver, Mass. Assessors map, 112 lots 1-5E and 1-5I, J, K, L, M, P, Q, R, and 3-88A, and map 107 lot 1-4A. The applicant seeks to append nine plus or minus acres of adjoining land to the property and modify the subdivision boundaries in compliance with MGL Chapter 41, Sections 81 WII. Increase the unit count from 54 units to 66 units. Sorry, that was two. Roman numeral three. Alter the building configuration to create zoning compliant triplexes and, Roman numeral four, adjust the roadway layout and lot configurations to accommodate alterations to phases two and three of the project in the residential agricultural zoning district. The proponent in this case has also requested an extension to March 28th, 2023 at 7:00 PM.
That's what I said.
Okay, so if there's...
Because I never get to say, "That's what I said."
Oh.
And Don is your... After a motion and a second, Don is...
For the special permit. All right. So the chair will accept the motion to continue the application of Weathervein at Patriot Pines requesting a special permit and site plan review until March 28th, 2023 at 7:00 PM.
I'll make that motion, seeing how it's one of the few things I can do.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gatski. Do we have any discussion on the matter? Seeing none, Mr. Deon.
Mr. Deon says aye.
John Gatski says aye. Sure.
Ellen Sordillo says aye.
Ellen says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. All right. Our next order of business is a public hearing on the application of Haley Shanus?
Shanus.
Shanus requesting a special permit pursuant to Sections 2230 and 5300 of the Carver zoning bylaw located at nine Island Farm Road in Carver, Mass. Assessors map, 10 lot 1-6, to operate a doggy daycare in the lower levels of the home in a residential agricultural district. All right. Ms. Shanus, if you would... Tell us... You don't have to get up. I think you're... Oh, wait a second, I have a... This isn't typically the public...
I understand that.
Okay.
I apologize, but I am the next door neighbor, and I was able to tour the property and see what they have done with the property and what she has done with everything regarding the doggy daycare, and I'm completely impressed. And I recommend we move forward with this.
All right. Could you identify yourself for the record, sir?
I just did. Mark Carey, eight Island Farm Road.
Thank you very much, Mr. Carey. All right. Now, if you would present us with your proposal, if you could tell us a little bit about it. I have the letter here that tells us a little bit about it, but we like to hear about it from you. You can do it from there. The microphone should pick it up. Yep. Just identify yourself first.
Yes. So my name is Haley Shanus. I do it in Island Farm Road. So I originally started working at a doggy daycare and boarding facility in Middleborough. I worked there for about three years, and I started managing it, so I was running the place for a while. And after working there for a while, I decided that I wanted to kind of branch out and start my own thing, just loved it, obviously, had a really good passion for it. And so I started a dog walking and pet sitting business around this time last year, and quickly it turned into more of like a... We would kind of go for a walk with the dogs, and then I'd bring them to my house in the backyard because it's fenced in, and I'd take some pictures, and we'd just kind of run around for a little bit, and then I'd just bring them back home. And then that kind of turned into more... More people were interested, and then, you know, I'd go pick up a few dogs for the day, and then I'd bring them to my house, and, you know, we play outside in the fenced-in area, and then we'll go back in. I have like an area in the basement. There were some pictures that I gave for you guys to pass around of the indoor area. And so it turned into more of like, kind of like a playdate kind of thing where I go pick the dogs up in the morning, and I'll let them out at their house to go to the bathroom, and then get them on my... Now I have a mini bus that I drive around, which I included in the pictures, or just a little mini bus to drive around, pick up the dogs. That was an inspiration for TikTok. And it's been working really well. So I'll go pick up the dogs in my bus, and then we hang out at my house for a little while, and then towards, you know, 3:00, 3:30, 4:00, I'll put them all back up in the bus, and then they head home and done by like five or six for the day, and everyone's tired and happy, and yeah.
Are they securing cages in the bus?
Yes, they are. I have a picture of the... Yes, there's...
Yes, okay, excellent.
So it's kind of like a little stall for them built in. My dad here helped me build the inside of it, so that everything's screwed into the ground. So depending on the dog's temperament and size, they'll either go in a crate or they'll go in one of the stalls, and the stalls do have tethers and a harness as reach for each of us. You can kind of see them to the back there.
So how many dogs would you actually have at a time?
Um, no more than like six to nine, something like that.
And are you by yourself? Does anybody help you?
My mom helps me. She helps me the most, you know, the most that she can when I need it, if I just, you know, need a little hand with something or need some help taking pictures because I do photo shoots and stuff for holidays and everything, so she'll help me with that kind of stuff. And also my friend Tori, who works still at that daycare, and she used to... We used to work together, so sometimes she'll help me out when she can.
Can I just ask, how old are you?
I'm 22.
You're 22?
Yes.
Good for you.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it.
So this is... Daycare is going to be daycare, or is this going to be overnight boarding?
Um, mostly it's just daycare. If anything, there might be the occasional, just one dog that comes to me normally, just staying with me, like normally, like they just blend in with my pack, like one of my dogs. But that's just an occasional type of thing, not like a multiple dogs each night. It's... That's just every once in a while, there might be like a weekend that I'll have one dog staying with me that blends in with the group normally, a usual client, per se.
How long have you been doing this?
It's been a year now.
And how many... How many dogs do you personally own?
I own two.
Two.
Well, at the... In the family home, there's three, but two, like the two personally are mine.
Two of them.
Yes.
So how many dogs a day do you have?
Um, no more than like six to 10.
Okay. So was that a school bus that you converted into?
Um, it's like one of those like South Shore newer buses that, you know, they'll take, you know, elders around to pick them up on, and it was a private sale. We bought it, and then kind of just redid the inside of it. Soon enough, we'll have my logo and everything on the outside of it, but in good time.
So you keep the dogs in that?
Just while I'm transporting them back to and from.
Okay.
And they're leashed and brought into the fenced-in area, and then I take leashes and collars off for safety.
So all the dogs stay in the house, then? Is that what you... Once you bring them back?
Um, we're outside as much as we can be, weather depending. So like in the summer, we're outside a lot, but in the winter, we're just kind of in and out, depending on how cold it is. This winter's been a little mild, so it's been... I've been pretty lucky.
Are you have a fenced-in area in the backyard?
Yes. The whole area is fenced in, and then the lower level, which is the basement, which is the indoor area, has a slider door that opens right out to the outside area.
And how long have you been operating?
Um, it's been a year since I've been... Since I've started the business, but since I've been doing this kind of thing, it's probably been like, I don't know, eight months, seven, eight months, something like that.
Do you already have a kennel license through the town?
I had that. They came on February 11th, and she came and inspected me in person.
And inspected it?
Yes.
We can get a copy of that.
Yeah.
Mr. Bott?
Do you have a copy of it?
I don't have a copy of it.
That's okay, we can get a copy.
But I believe she did email it over to the town clerk's office.
Yeah.
So after all of this, I think I was gonna go and do that.
All right. Now, you're not the owner of the house?
No.
So it's gonna have to... Certain things are gonna have to... The application and various other aspects of it will have to be done through the actual owners of the property. We can get a copy of that. Do we know if any complaints have been filed in regards to the business?
Uh, I haven't heard anything.
That's okay. I expect it's at the end of Dead End Street, but we can check on that. And we're gonna schedule a site walk to come in and see the premises and to make sure it's appropriate.
Uh, looks like... I don't know if I'm behind it.
No. At all times, the dogs have to have identification on them. That's...
Well, I do require, I always have files on me with up-to-date rabies, everything, records.
But when the dogs are outside of your premises, outside of the house itself, they have to have collars and tags on them.
Okay.
Because that's part of our leash law, and if anything happens, then we need to know who to go back to.
Okay.
Okay. Because I know you stay in here for safety reasons, and that's fine as far... I don't know if there's a requirement inside the house, but I know outside, it's gonna... They're gonna have to be identifiable.
Okay. Does it make a difference if I microchip?
We can't scan for microtips. So one moment, I'll get...
I get that, though.
Okay.
I totally understand.
Now, do we have any further questions or comments from the board?
Not at this time.
All right. So we are gonna open it up to the public now.
One discussion I would have would be that they're gonna have regulations that you inquire for them, right? If you're gonna tell them that they need to do that. The only thing that I am worried about is that there are other obligations as far as outside, but I, like I said, I've toured the facility. I'm 100% okay with what I've seen. I just don't know about the transport of animals, which I think you're concerned with as well.
Well, to a certain degree, but we don't license... Just for the record, that's Mr. Carey of Eight Island Farm Road. When it comes to over the road, that's a state and federal issue, and that's not something that we have control of. We just want to make sure that she's safe, and if she... Something happens, that it all doesn't come tumbling to the front of the car, and, you know, and that's why, of course, part of the reason for your acquire.
I've seen it, and I'm completely 100% satisfied with what they've done with that vehicle. And honestly, I would 100%... I just lost my dog. We had a rescue. We lost it due to stroke, but I'm 100% confident that we give my dog to Haley when we go on vacation.
Thank you. We take that as a very high recommendation.
Very highly recommended, yes.
Now, do you have any other concerns? I know you mentioned...
I have no concerns with them, with what they're doing, and I... There's no noise, there's no scent, there's no stink, there's nothing. I'm completely happy with what they're doing and how Haley is gonna resume with what she's doing.
Excellent. Now, we've also received a letter from Diana Shannon of nine Island Farm Road, which will be entered into the record. She feels you will operate safely and professionally also. Uh, well, I'm sorry, that's seven Farm Road.
Yeah, she's having a good time.
And we'll enter that into the record for you also. All right. Any further questions or concerns from the board?
Um, one question. I know that you're driving, picking up the... Picking up the animals to and from, and you've got what appears to be a repurposed, essentially a Gatterbus-type vehicle. Are there... Are you aware of any special state licensing requirements as far as for driving... For operating that type of vehicle and moving pets around?
I did research into that, and as of right now, there's nothing that I'm aware of, with no licenses, with special licenses needed as a program.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
I know the state...
I wasn't sure. I... This is the first time I've heard of a pickup and delivery for animals, so...
Yeah, yeah.
It's a bit genius.
It's a really bit more popular.
Yeah, I can... I imagine so.
But it's, you know, I want to make it a thing.
That's pretty cool.
I think one of the biggest concerns with the state is bringing out-of-state dogs in that haven't met the vaccine requiring license.
Yeah, yeah, that's... That's why it's just a... I know there's a difference between being a transporter and a taxi service or whatnot, but I didn't know if there was, especially with that particular type of vehicle, if you needed a special license for it or not.
Are they distracted when you drive?
They are, yes. Their harness and...
Now, the tethers, do they attach to like a body type harness, or do they attach to collars?
A body type harness. That's like close up and hooks in the back. They're ones that I've purchased on him, on for the car.
Right.
Yeah.
Very cool.
I've used them.
All right. Any further questions or comments from anybody? Seeing none, we will schedule a site walk. Is a noon time site walk at some point good for you?
Yeah.
It would be Monday through Friday at some point, probably, but I'm gonna let the board speak as to their availability.
When are you planning on doing this?
I was thinking Monday at noon time, but I can leave that open for discussion.
Like the sixth?
Like the sixth, yeah.
Yeah. That'd be probably my best opportunity, because I'm on call this week, so... And then I've got definitive plans on Thursday.
All right. If Monday at noon is good for everybody?
It's good for me.
Is that... Will that work for you?
Yeah, that's okay.
Okay. I'm gonna ask you to make sure that the parents... It's gonna be her business. We want to make sure that...
Yeah, we'll get a certification that... Because the applicant is not the owner of the property.
Right, right.
There's a certification that... That's fine with the owner of the property.
I'm the father. Can I just sign a lease to her?
Well, essentially, it was just a sheet. We...
It doesn't matter.
The sheet that says, "I'm the owner, I authorize this application."
That's fine. I won't be there Monday, I'll be at work.
Yeah. It's not particularly complex.
If you do the lease, it opens up other complexities that you might not want to deal with.
All right. Whatever the board decides in their infinite wisdom.
Mr. Carey, you raised your hand.
I'm just saying, what if Mr. Shanus added her as an additional owner of the property?
Yeah.
That's cool.
We can't... Yeah, we can't agree with that.
I know, I'm not just saying that. Is that an option for them or no?
I... Well, yes, it is, but I think it's...
Oh, we want to do that.
I don't think it'll be necessary. As long as the owners of the property...
You have three options, that's all.
All right.
I apologize. I didn't mean that at all.
No, no. It's okay. This is a public hearing, please. We do our best to encourage citizens' participation. All right. So any further discussion? Seeing none, the chair will accept the motion to continue the public hearing of Haley Shanus requesting a special permit for... To operate a doggy daycare at nine Island Farm Road in Carver until March...
My day. My day. March 14th.
March 14th.
I'd like to make...
At 7:00 PM.
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Ms. Sordillo.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Deon. Do we have further discussion? Seeing none, thank you very much. We will see you Monday at noon time.
Vote.
Oh, yes, correct. Mr. Deon?
Mr. Deon says aye.
John Gatski says aye.
Ellen Sordillo says aye.
Ellen says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you very much. We'll see you Monday at noon, and then we'll see you back here in two weeks. Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right. Our next order of business is a request for extension to special permit site plan review approval for Rocky Maple Solar 370 Tremont Street, assessors map 128 lot 7 and 8 in Carver, Mass. Discussion and possible vote. Ms. Stens, if you would care to regale us a little bit?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. For the record, Sarah Stens with Fields and Thomas. We are back requesting an extension for the special permit site plan application or site plan decision that was issued for this project known as Rocky Maple Solar 370 Tremont Street, right at the Carver Wareham Town Line. This project, like many of the solar projects that were approved within the past few years, has been delayed, this one specifically, for a couple of reasons. Number one, one that you've heard many times over, the Eversource Group study that has taken many years to be undertaken by the utility companies ongoing, so these projects cannot move forward until that is complete. And as we talked about last time we were here for this project, the permit from Wareham Conservation Commission was appealed and is still in litigation, so that is the second item that is delayed to start of construction on either side of the town line for this project. So we are here requesting specifically a two-year extension of the special permit and a one-year extension of the site plan just for consistency with how they are typically issued. And that would bring the lapse date of the special permit to March 23rd, 2025, and the site plan to March 23rd, 2024, if the board deems that appropriate. I think ideally, it would be great if they both lapsed at the same time, but I know we're working on that, so... But as of right now, I think...
Town meeting.
Yeah, I saw that. I think as of right now, it probably makes sense to kind of stick to how they are typically issued, but certainly willing to discuss and happy to try to answer any further questions, but that is it in a nutshell.
The accessways and the interconnection are going through Wareham, correct?
Wareham, yes. That's the current access to the property right now. There's no existing access on the Carver side of the town line, so everything comes in through Wareham.
Will it ever be through Carver?
No.
Yeah, and just to editorialize a bit on this, the recent Tracer Lane case, we talked about a few times, about access coming from another property, has been in court and has basically changed the dynamic of a lot of these projects. So it's conceivable that they ever get to court, that the Tracer Lane case will come in and apply, and the Conservation Commission will essentially have to... Will have, you know, to comply with other court decisions.
All right.
Have we already done the code extension on this one?
The... I'm sorry, the what?
The mandatory COVID extension? Has that already been issued?
It didn't expire during the COVID time period, so...
It was issued prior to it, though.
Yes, but it didn't expire during COVID, so it expired at that time, right?
Yeah, there was no additional COVID extension for this because of when it was issued. It didn't qualify.
Oh, okay.
And I want to make sure, because I actually was happening to be driving past the property and want to make sure that it won't be visible from the road, that if that's necessary, you will add extra screening on the roadside.
Yeah, I mean, we're not proposing to change anything. It's already been approved. I mean, the good thing about this project is the Carver side has quite a bit of frontage, but it's set so... The bog itself where the project is proposed is set so far back off of Tremont Street that you really... It's really not visible. There's an existing berm, and it's a wooded buffer along the street there.
I could see out over the cranberry bogs because the deciduous trees have lost all their leaves at this time. I just want to make sure that, if necessary, that you're willing to screen it from the street a little better if that...
I mean, I don't know, today is the forum to talk about additional commitments, and we're just trying to extend it for what it is. I don't think that that would be a problem, but I don't feel like I'm the person to make that commitment on behalf of my client who's not here.
Right, right.
I think, you know, there's going to be pre-construction meetings, but there's a lot to happen and more discussion with this board, so I think that's a good time to bring that up.
All right. So... But you're aware now that that is going to be a concern of the board? Okay.
But if I could just clarify, after a decision has been made and there's been no appeal on the Carver side of things, we don't get to open the thing back up and make changes to it. If they request a modification, we certainly do, but you don't get to go in and sort of open up the box of something and issue additional conditions.
We're not looking to... But this was part of the original discussion and the concerns that were raised with it. So... Any further questions from the board?
So you're looking for a special permit for what, two years?
Yes. Special permit for two years. Special permit for two years and site plan for one year, just in keeping with the typical life of those permits as issued.
I thought special permits were only a year.
I thought they were the other way around.
Special permits, I think, are two years, stay for a maximum of three, with extensions permissible.
Oh, I thought we were looking to change that at.
Well, at town meeting, we're gonna make them both two years.
Right, right.
I thought it was, special permit was a year, and site plan is for two years.
That's what I thought, too.
Special permit is for two years, but according to the bylaw, and as Tom said, the state allows it for three years. Site plan is just administered locally, and that's the one year.
All right.
Yeah, so the town meeting article is to increase from one year to two years lapse of a site plan.
Okay, all right. Well, we certainly can understand that there's been issues with upgrading the grid with Eversource. And do we have any idea when they feel that Eversource feels that they're gonna be able to?
I have no idea, to be perfectly honest with you.
They haven't given you any idea?
I have heard anecdotally, they're getting close, but I really could not tell you what that means, unfortunately.
All right. And now, all right. Further questions from the board? Seeing none, we've already extended this once, is that correct?
We extended the site plan for one year so that it lapses this coming March in concert with the special permit lapse.
All right. So we will extend it for another year, and if you still have, if there's still issues with Eversource, we'll be glad to take in, because that's out of your hands. I know it's a very extensive upgrade that they're doing, and they're adding new towers all the way through Kingston, so the board will accept the motion.
I'll make, oh, I'm sorry.
To extend the site, site plan review and special permit for Rocky Maple Solar Project 370 Tremont Street, Carver, Massachusetts, until the date of March 23rd, 2024.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Gatski, seconded by Ms. Sordillo. Do we have any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Dion?
Mr. Dion says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Ellen Sordillo says aye.
It is a special permit.
Mr. William says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you very much, Sarah.
You're gonna have to ice down your shoulder tonight, Tom.
All right.
Had to get him a throat lozenge for talking so much.
We have a public meeting coming up next Tuesday.
We do, so if I may. So next week, March 7th, is the opening of the planning board hearings for special permit, or for town meeting articles. It's gonna be at the police station, and we have reserved the police station for the 7th and the 8th. So we're looking at having those two nights in a row. As we did last year, I suggest sort of a stopping point when we get to the petition articles. Some of the petitioner, one of the petitioner wrote me and said there's another meeting on the 7th they prefer, they need to go to, and wanted to make sure that articles didn't come up until the 8th. And my recommendation, as you see on the draft agenda in front of you for the 7th, after Article X9, a note suggests continuing meeting at this point to 3823 and begin with those petitioned articles. So you have in your hands the packets for town meeting for the articles, so you can take a look at those. In addition, we put them online as well. So let's see if I manage to sort this out. So on the planning board's website, there's a link to the bylaw hearings, as you can see on the right corner here. So when you go to the planning board's website, anybody can click on that, and it'll bring you to the hearing page, which has the articles on it. From that page, there is also information about the articles, as well as the information that the Battery and Storage Moratorium Committee looked at during their discussions. So from here, we can click on the warrant articles, and they're all listed. A couple of the articles, one, two of the articles, because there's eight pages of text with the zoning, this establishes they're not on the warrant itself, so they'll be included in one of those documents that are attached to it. So when you go to the website and you see the hearing notices, that stuff in blue that's highlighted, you can click on that, and it'll bring you to the actual zoning article. So for folks, you know, keeping score at home, there's a couple of different ways to get there. Then we have, in those articles for town meeting, lays them all out there, and then five, you can also find this information.
And that'll be at the police station at 7:00 PM next Tuesday night.
Correct. And it's planned for both nights. The select board upstairs is talking about the potential for adding some selectmen-related articles as well. I don't know how that is going to roll, but if that is the case, there'll have to be additional hearings for those articles, and those would likely be on March 28th, in order to make sure they're properly advertised.
Joy.
So, but the issue with the select board articles is that one of the select board members wants to rescind three articles related to the Green Business Park. Height of the buildings, height of lights, and heights of.
Water.
The water tower. The height of the building, which I think was the thing that probably garnered the most interest because of the lack of firefighting equipment. That's one of the things that's already on our warrant. So whether the board takes that under advisement or not, the select board sends it to us, it's already on the warrant for discussion.
The height of the building is?
Six.
Right, because I thought we discussed that back in December.
Yeah, from 40 feet to 65 feet. So that's on the warrant.
All right.
That's on the hearing.
I thought it was an inclusive thing, but, okay.
So we'll see how that plays out. So, like I said, I think that you've got sort of a belt and suspenders thing going there with the two, but that's up to the board, the select board, whatever they decide they'd like to do.
Are the citizen petition bylaws listed somewhere, or is that bylaws?
No, they're in the packet. So when I go to the zoning bylaws, and we get all the way to the end here, we have.
Okay, I see petitioned, okay.
So while the zoning bylaw has. Yeah, so while we have placeholders for some of the articles, we're talking about petitioned articles at the end of the hearing notes, and they are as.
One, two, and three.
Yeah, there are no changes to them. That's the thing about petitioned articles, the planning board doesn't get to change them, only the other can do that.
Now, a town meeting, can someone vote to change anything in any of these?
They can. I have often counseled that it is not a best management practice to try to write zoning on the floor at town meeting.
Have you been to Carver's town meetings?
I have. This'll be my second, second town meeting. The thing that we've talked about pretty regularly in the zoning, solar and battery energy storage committee, bylaw committee, moratorium bylaw committee, I'm gonna have to stop saying that one. Is that town council from day one said it's a very narrow lane for amending the solar bylaw, because of the thumb on the scale of the Commonwealth for solar. So we have worked through the bylaw committee with that in mind. We've sent the articles that have been recommended by the solar and battery energy storage moratorium committee to town council to take a look at, and so we're trying to plow our field right in that narrow lane. If someone decides they wanna throw out all those things recommended by the solar bylaw committee and make wholesale changes to those, you risk, they risk the possibility of having the attorney general say, "No, you've gone a little out of your lane, and we're not gonna allow that," and what we'll wind up with is the same bylaw you already have. So.
But they could start with, you're 200 feet, they want 100 feet. You're, I mean, they could pick through things that are within their, changing them, what, less but not more, and take forever?
It's a public meeting, and if the moderator recognizes somebody, they can make whatever suggestion they want. What we're trying to do is take a very thoughtful look at this, employ the work of town council in the case of battery energy storage. We've borrowed heavily from Medway. They have a similar program going on, where they've been working on this for about two years, and hired an extensive number of folks to look at those things. And those are some of the documents that we posted, that we've borrowed from Medway.
But that doesn't stop.
No, that's why it's important for everybody to show up for the public hearings, if they have concerns, questions, comments.
It would be nice if they do.
Yes, certainly. Well, generally, yes.
History and certain personalities don't.
On night one, the select board is meeting, same night, same time. On night two, you're the show. So who wants to watch TV on Wednesday night? You know, why wouldn't you wanna come to the police station and talk about zoning?
It's on your cable at home if you wanna watch it.
From the police station, it won't be live, though. It'll be video-recorded and rebroadcast. But there's plenty of room at the police station.
It'll be memorex.
Yeah, in the, that is in the meeting room up front. I don't know what they do in the back.
Yeah.
But there's, we're in the meeting room up front, so.
Nobody wants to be in the meeting room out back, I think. We seem to be struggling with scheduling for our normally scheduled Tuesday nights. Is this something that's going to continue for the foreseeable future?
You mean with somebody else using the room?
Well, yes, right.
Well, there appears to be a pecking order, and the select board is at the top of that pecking order. So when they decide to have a meeting on Tuesday night, on the meetings that we usually have, because they're typically one, first, and third, I understand, and we're typically second and fourth.
Right.
You know, the best rec, the best way to fix that is to not meet on Tuesday night, or ask the select board to not meet on Tuesday night.
Well, not necessarily. I think that a certain level of courtesy that they not schedule on the Tuesday night, the second and fourth Tuesday night, would be a consideration.
Well, I tell people on a pretty regular basis, I hardly know what's going on in my office, much rather, what's going on in other people's offices, so why?
It's not like they're not familiar that those are the nights that were typically broadcasted.
Yeah, but when you're the general, you don't worry about what the major wants.
Yeah, well, I think when it comes to it, that we are separate but equal parts of the way this town works. We both have separate but equal responsibilities.
In your opinion?
Well, we're both elected positions, and they're both clearly separated, and they're both held of the same importance. Where are we at? Discussion? Nope. Minutes. We have minutes from 12/20/2022. And the chair will accept a motion to approve the minutes of 12/20/2022 as edited.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Gatski.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Dion. Further discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Dion?
Mr. Dion says aye.
Mr. Gatski?
John Gasky says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Right. Alan, you were?
When was, what was that?
12/20/22?
Was that my last meeting?
I will, I am more than, oh, it should be in the meeting minutes, but I don't have a hard copy. It should say who was in attendance.
Ellen Sordillo was absent.
Absent.
I thought it was your first absence.
Okay, it might have been, yeah.
All right. Our next order of business is the minutes of January 10th, 2023. The chair will accept the motion to approve the amended minutes of January 10th, 2023.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Gatski.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Dion. Do we have further discussion?
Mr. Dion says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you very much. I think that covers everything. The chair will accept the motion for adjournment.
I'll accept motion.
Motion made by Mr. Dion.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Ms. Sordillo. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Dion?
Mr. Dion says aye.
John Gasky aye.
Ellen Sordillo aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you all very much, and have a good evening.